I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Regional City Council Tuesday, May 13th. The first item on the agenda is introduced by Pastor Randy Hester of Community Baptist Church, 509 Triangle Road, Beesville. Pastor Hester is also a chaplain at the Regional Police Department.
That is great. We want to give thanks to the one from whom all blessings flow. And one of the blessings in my life is the city of Reedsville, North Carolina. I love living here. We love living here, Lord. We're thankful for our city. And we're not perfect, but we have camaraderie. We love people. We've got people who love each other, take care of each other. We want to do right. I'm thankful for the peacefulness. I'm thankful for the beauty. I'm thankful for the friendships. I'm thankful for just so many blessings of living here in this city. But I am reminded that with every blessing comes the responsibility of stewardship. Even Adam and Eve had to take care of the Garden of Eden. And so there is a responsibility of stewardship for this blessing in the city of Reedsville. This council is a major part of the stewardship of our city. And their responsibility to our city is heavy. It's challenging. It's important and it's necessary. And so I ask for wisdom to come to this council from the one who promised wisdom when we ask. I pray for the knowledge that this council needs to make the decisions, to understand the complex issues many times that they have to work through and think through and come at from many different angles. I pray for the decisions that they'll be making, even the night some decisions have been made, some decisions are being considered more, some decisions will be possibly made here in this room this evening. I just pray for wisdom and accuracy and just correct judgment. I pray, Lord, just for a heart that comes from you, a courage that steals their spine to make tough decisions when it's necessary, that you'll give them strong hands to be able to serve us well. And Lord, while I'm going at it, I get the feet to take them into our community and see things firsthand so that they can understand exactly what's going on. Men and women on our council serve us well. And I trust, I trust each one of them. I trust each one of them and know that they are serving because they want to serve us well. So give them your grace, give them your strength, give them your wisdom this night and from here on as they are fulfilling their responsibility to our community that they have taken on themselves. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
We all rise. Pledge of allegiance.
Land, nation, state, democracy, the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will be doing recognition of National Police Officers Week, May 11 through 17, 2025, and Peace Officers Memorial Day on Thursday, May 15, 2025. And after that, we'll be recognizing Public Works Week. I think I saw the chief coming in here. Proclamation reads, whereas the members of the Regional Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Regional Police Department provide a vital public service to our local community. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Gore, Mayor of the city of Reedsville, on behalf of the Regional City Council, do hereby proclaim May 11 through 17, 2025, as National Police Week in Reedsville, commemorating law enforcement officers past and present. I further call upon all citizens to observe May 15, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the state of North Carolina, in honor of those police officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service that our community will have become disabled in the line of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. This the 13th day of May, 2025.
That's okay. I got it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Truly recognize the sacrifice that police officers made and stolen. That we're recognizing on Police Officer Day, made the ultimate sacrifice. And unfortunately, that happens all too often in the country we live in. But just please continue to pray for our officers, pray for this city, pray for the safety of our officers and the safety of the citizens. Thank you.
Josh Beck. Proclamation reads, whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and we found that out today. And whereas the support and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, maintenance, water treatment, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And where the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, or well as their planning and designing and construction, as well as their planning and designing and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works employees. Whereas the efficiency and the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Gore, Mayor of the city of Reedsville, on behalf of the Regional City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through 24, 2025, as Public Works In the city of Reedsville, and I call upon all citizens to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which these employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, following this year's theme, people, purpose, presence. This the 13th day of May, 2025.
Appreciate you. Yes, Lee. Thank you, mother.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Super job. Yeah.
Josh, I want to give a few words, and then if you'd like to, you can update on the situation.
Sure. Well, first of all, I just want to thank the team and truthfully, I'm missing several. And that's honestly because they're still working on the current situation. So our, for example, our water treatment team is still out ongoing collecting samples to test for back to you and make sure that the water is safe. Our street department is also still on scene actively working to try to make the necessary street repairs. But certainly appreciate the guys. Today is a good example of why we truly need a team. I mean, actually, you know, the water plant noticed the situation. Our sanitation department actually found the leak going their route and then began notifying other personnel. So it was truly a team effort to get this accomplished today. You know, obviously, we apologize for the disruption, but we worked as quickly as we could to resolve. So but certainly thank these guys for each and everything they do. Many of them you don't see, you know, but truthfully, their staff is out and doing all the needs of the city to keep it going each and every day. So we certainly thank, I thank them for sure, for everything they do to support me and all the public works. In regards to the situation that occurred today, so we did have a electrical disruption at our water treatment plant this morning at roughly 2:00 a.m. Of course, our plant is staffed 24/7. So the operators on the scene noticed that disruption, and we lost the plant for roughly a few minutes. Callers began calling, notifying staff. Shortly thereafter, about 2:58, give or take, we were notified by CCOM that the system had lost pressure. At 4:08, like I said, mentioned previously, our, actually, our night truck sanitation department discovered the leak that was occurring over on Park Lane. And so we, of course, we were on scene trying to locate a leak, but in the pouring down rain and in the dark and in the night, it becomes very hard to trace one break in, you know, roughly a city the size of ours. So we immediately diverted crews to that location and then began to isolate the break so that the tanks could begin recovery. We'll, of course, shut those off and rough fix the pipe, the current situation around 1:45 this afternoon. Tanks, you know, in our system is going to continue to recover, but it does take a lot of time for that system to fully recover. So pressure will continue to increase throughout the night. If you open your tap and, you know, you hear air, just continue to let it. There's obviously a lot of air in the system from the loss of pressure in that. It may even turn around for a few minutes, just continue to let that water run until it turns clear. We are, as I mentioned, we're taking all the necessary samples and precautions to ensure that the water is safe. So that full water notice will be in effect until tomorrow evening. I know everybody's going to want to know what's the status, when is it safe to drink? But please understand, we will not know that answer till tomorrow about this time. So if you have other questions or concerns, please call Public Works tomorrow. We'll certainly dispatch. If you have overnight issues, then please call CCOM. And but again, we want to encourage, we'd like to take this opportunity to encourage everyone to please sign up for Code Red. That is one of the fastest ways we can tell you about a situation, not only situations like this, but Edward posted numerous ones throughout the year for your sanitation collection schedules change due to holidays. That's another easy way to get his updates, as well as updates in regards to water breaks or other issues the city may have. So we try to get that information out very quickly. One of the first things we were doing this morning is waking Miss Angel up to get that out. But yeah, please. And again, if you're not signed up, please call our office at 349-1070 tomorrow morning. We'll gladly get you signed up for that. We don't spam. We don't do those things. It's just emergency messages and then trash, trash of whatever important messages the city needs to see. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And I do think we have one item that's going to be pulled. Are we okay with the first three? And so, get a motion for the first three. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor raise your right hand. Item D, approval of a request to begin the process to voluntarily annex 49.599 acres, Rockingham County Tax Parcel, 155460, off Salem Church Road, including a resolution directing the clerk to investigate a petition received under GS 160A-58.1 and a resolution fixing date of the public hearing on June 10, 2025, A 2025-03. Who would we have to come up and discuss that?
Mayor and council. So tonight, you don't, I don't believe the property owner is present. We could ask city staff if they want to come forward and let you know about the process and where we're at. So I will call on our planning and community development director, Jason Harden, to please come forward. So Jason, if you might, could just share with mayor and council and our citizens kind of the process that led us to today and what this step is? And if council thing may have questions?
Absolutely. I apologize for my voice. I've recovered from this weekend's illness, but my voice hasn't. So I apologize. It crackles around. So in CGS 168, which is the general statute that governs the rules for annexation, requires that the first step for any annexation is don't volunteer. Remember, the state outlawed involuntary annexation by cities several years ago. So now it has to be voluntary. So this petition was submitted by a property owner, Salem Church Road, leave the property owner. So they submit to us, they sign petition with a description of the property, which is the law written, the one that says beginning and so and so. So this is the first step to initiate that, to investigate it. This is not issuing kind of approval. If you all set the public hearing date for next month, then we'll come back to you with a staff recommendation after we review it. And then you would consider the approval after the public hearing. That's also required by the statute that you conduct the public hearing or non-continuous annexation. This was a little bit different. I know some of you will probably hear when we've done a non-continuous annexation in the past, it hasn't been too long. I think 2019 or so might have been the last non-continuous one we did. But the requirements for those are just a little bit different. It can't be any more than three miles past the general corporate limits. So the primary corporate limit, it can't be more than three miles. It can encompass, you can't annex non-continuous property that's more than 10% of the acreage within your primary corporate limit, meaning that within like the main body of the city, you can annex more than 10% of that acreage. We keep a running tally of that and we're well below the 10%. So I noted that and I'm not going to know that's in your packet. And then the final requirement is that it can be any closer to another municipality than our municipality, and it's not. We measure that, the closest can be Wentworth, but it's closer. This parcel is closer to us than it is to Wentworth if you measure linear feet. So I noted all that in my memo. So this is just the standard procedure under the statute to initiate the annexation. There's no approval tonight. That would be if you schedule the public hearing for next month, and then we come back to you, and then I'll be happy to be answering any questions that you have. But again, I'm not the property owner, so I couldn't advocate on their behalf or, you know, go against it. It's just, we're just kind of bringing it to you what the request is.
So I got a couple of comments that I want to make, and I'm the one that requested this to be pulled. I want to give the, a couple of reasons why. As you see in this approval request, we just know that there's an annexation, a process to begin the annexation of satellite property outside of the city. So we know nothing about the annexation period, like what is he planning on doing with it? What's being built there? The services that we have to provide there. So the reason that I wanted this pulled was so that there could be discussions to see if it was even in the city's interest to begin to spend money in that exploratory process of sending out notifications, posting signs, and spending staff's time on that if it's not a project that even fits the direction or the growth of the city. So no one at this table understands anything about this project unless you happen to know about it. But as a whole, we don't know anything. And I hope everyone would understand why I think it's more important for staff or for council to know what are we doing off of Salem Church Road? What is this resolution for? And what is this builder's intent or developer's intent? And what is the purpose in the annexation? None of that is provided to us during this consent agenda process.
And mayor and council, if I may, what might be helpful since the property owners or the person petitioning for this is not present? And I'll defer to legal, but you may could table this and request that they come before you and make those exact requests.
Correct.
So the one thing.
One second. I got one thing. And when we are looking at these satellite annexations, we're also talking about having to give up valuable resources of what we have right now, which is our water and sewer, which is my concern, to know more before we even spend the taxpayers' money to begin the process of what you have in here directing the clerk to investigate. We may all, we may know, once you tell us the project, that we don't want to spend the money nor staff's time and salaries to investigate that. So what I was going to ask was to make a motion to table this to the, to the next council meeting. Have that information readily available. Give us the opportunity to discuss, and then we'd make the decision whether it moves on or not.
Got you. There has been a rezoning petition submitted that will go to the planning board for consideration next week for a conditional zoning for this land, to decide the initial zoning. That's kind of how we follow the process to, because within two months of it being annexed, we have to designate a zoning district to that property to avoid it being unincorporated territory, unzoned territory. So there is a petition that will be considered by them next week. So if you do table it and then we come back to next month, then it's likely that that's going to prolong the process too with that too. So that's just something I want to make you aware of.
Absolutely.
And I would defer to our attorney, if that is the desire of council. I think it would be appropriate then for city staff to notify our planning board that that topic would then just be removed from their agenda for a further date.
Right. And do we have a motion to table item D?
Make a motion.
Got a motion?
I'll sit there.
And we have a say in the discussion.
A question. You mentioned to have the owner be present, so we need to notify him to see when he can be present?
Yes, mayor and council. I wouldn't request that we get in contact with the owner and let them know that they will need to be present at this next council meeting, at your June meeting, because it's their petition, and it would only be right for them to speak on behalf of it since they know the logistics of the project. So us as staff, based on your direction, will inform them that they must be here.
Any discussion? All those in favor of tableing D, raise your right hand. Thank you, Jason. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bike lane removal on South Park Drive in Closure Point. That city manager, Summer Moore.
Thank you, mayor and council. So we wanted to bring this up. So in August of 2022, paving was completed on South Park Drive. The new paving included a new bike lane and installation of no parking signs. The new design raised concerns among residents regarding parking on the street. This was an item discussed at the city council retreat in February of 2025. If city council desires to remove the bike lane and accompanying bike symbols on the side of the street opposite of South End Elementary School, the cost to do so would be approximately $5,100. Please see attached quote from the Triad Road Maintenance Incorporated. The no parking signs would be removed if this is the desire of council. The quote is attached, and the suggested motion for approval would be to approve the removal of the bike lane and accompanying bike symbols on the side of the street opposite of South End Elementary School. Or if you motion is to deny, it would be denied, the removal of the bike and accompanying bike symbols on the street of, on the side of the street opposite of South End Elementary School. And I would advise mayor and council, as soon as we get your decision tonight, we will immediately notify the property owners. I'll work with the police chief and see if we can get those sent to them, probably maybe deliverable, so they don't have to wait on the mail. And then I also ask for coordination with our public works department that we give ample notice to the property owners. If council decides to move forward with removing that line, we give the property owners ample notice so they can be prepared for that minor disruption that may cause.
Do we have a motion for the removal of bike?
I'd like a motion for the removal of, suggest, I make a motion to approve the removal of bike and accompanying bike symbols on the side of the street opposite of South End Elementary School.
All right, we have a motion. And we have a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to say one thing. I received several phone calls about this, and when myself and Shannon came on board, this was a hot topic amongst the people of South Park Drive. One, a couple of other things that came about is the fact that the city put these signs up and then now we're paving to take them down. One of the things that I want to point out to the people is that this, that from, from our investigation and being explained to this by the city manager, this was actually something that was voted on back approximately 20 years ago. So this council board was not here. A city staff member who has now retired knew that this was to happen when they were repaving, took it upon themselves to go ahead and enforce that action. So therefore, if anyone thinks that the city is wasting taxpayers' dollars, we apologize. However, it's $5,100 to get back what you want, and no one can do anything else about it other than spend $5,100, you know? There's no one to hold accountable for these actions anymore.
Any other?
And if I remember correctly, we had several lengthy meetings with the residents of that area, and they were pretty adamant that this is what they wanted. And they are our constituents, and so I wholeheartedly approve that motion.
Any other? All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Next item on the agenda, consideration of Indigo Creek Townhouse's private waterline repair and accompanying budget ordinance amendment, Closure 2. Josh Beck.
Thank you, mayor, city council, city manager. This has actually been going on for close to 10 months now when I was reviewing the memo again. So we, if you remember, about the time of August 21st there as listed, we had some pretty substantial storms. If you recall, that was one, we actually had one of the overflows at the wastewater treatment plant. And so during that, we obviously were notified by Indigo Creek of some issues with some stormwater systems in the area. So staff began to explore those. And one of the concerns that we had at the time was that we thought And one of the concerns that we had at the time was that we thought that one of those storm systems might have fallen and actually settled on our sewer line, which is publicly maintained going through there. And so we used our CCTV equipment, ran through there and determined that we did actually have some water intrusion coming into our sewer system, basically out in the middle of the field. Obviously the, the homes are pretty substantial distance off of Morehead. So then we, shortly thereafter, we began excavation of that area and found and actually a, a sewer service out in the middle of that field that we can only assume was probably placed at one time or another for the expand, a future expansions of that development. And so when we found that and we knew it wasn't actually servicing anything, we capped that off and determined that the water coming into that sewer service was actually drinking water, not stream or creek runoff that was coming into it. We then notified the HOA president at that time. Obviously, we had had dealings with them in the past about the stormwater system. Well, since then, we've had numerous conversations. We had a meeting shortly after the new year and understand that they have tried to work several different ways to address this issue. Again, based on the plat and everything that we have in, in, in our inventory, this is a private water line into that subdivision. That is why Public Works is not responsible for making these necessary repairs, as if there was a line to break in Morehead Street. And so we understand through those conversations that they asked Steve City with City Plumbing for a quote to make those repairs, but did not proceed fully with that. So what we're asking tonight is that, that you authorize Public Works to allow them to contract directly with Steve City and City Plumbing. Obviously, he's a utility contractor as well to make the necessary repairs for this and we will pay them. And then I'll work with Chris and finance to begin that reimbursement process from the owners, both at the front, who have agreed to pay half of that and then the owner, all the townhome owners at the back. Chris and I talked about this and, and kind of agreed that we give them a 12-month period to pay that off if you do them. And I did the math in one of my last paragraphs there. So basically it splits to 17, 50 each if it comes out to the total price of the $35,000 that's listed. And again, that's a not-to-exceed price. It could come in less if he finds the leak and can repair it quickly. But then that would work out to about $1,250 to each resident. And again, if we give them 12 months, then that's just a, a few dollars over $100 a month for them to make that necessary repair. Again, this water, we don't truthfully know how long that break has occurred because it was somewhat hidden, but we do know that this leak has been active for at least roughly 12 months at this, or 10 months at this point. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know it's a little unusual. Again, we're kind of like today, we're used to just running out there, fixment, pavement, and then calling in the day. This is a little bit different situation. So again, be happy to answer any questions you have. I see Shannon there.
Yeah, I did have a question.
Yes, sir.
So in regards to the $17,005 for the Gonzalez family, that, that we have confirmation that they are going to foot that or they just say that?
Well, I don't have any kind of written agreement, but they, they have agreed to that on several occasions. And I've had numerous conversations with them.
This may go to the city manager here. What would be the process of locking them in? What do we need to do to lock that family in to cover that 17, 5 so we don't deal in a situation where they kind of fit, you know, forget about it and we have to do a different process?
You, you could get them to sign a promissory note and if they didn't pay, it's still on the note. It's not putting any real estate up as collateral. So they, an unsecured note, if they didn't pay, then you carry them.
So what, what about the property being collateral in this?
Putting that in, you have to keep the trust.
Okay.
It would be a loan to the property owner with a, with a secured note to pay back those monthly payments. And if they fail or refuse to pay, then that property is collateral for that money, which I don't think they ever agreed to. But, but all right. And then the same thing with the residents with the townhomes and the HOA. I mean, you could have a promissory note paid or signed by each property owner. Or if, if it's the HOA that is taking responsibility of all the property owners, then it's the HOA.
So, so I have, I have a question. The, the, are we financing the, the, the whole $35,000? Or is the property owner supposed to be cutting the check for the 17, 5 as well? Is he on payment plan as well for the 17, 5 outside of the individual homeowners that are?
All, yeah, all of our discussions, he hasn't mentioned a request for any kind of payment plan. We're just providing that option for, for the, the townhome.
Yeah, yeah, so, so here, here's, here's my suggestion. We, we provide the 17, 5 financed to the individuals who live in the townhomes on their water rated the 104. The, the individual property owner that own that, own that property that's crossing through that's going to pay the 17, 5, I feel like he needs a contract with City Plumbing. He needs to pay that 17, 5. We pay the 17, 5 that we have the ability to, up the water bill by $104 monthly on the people who actually live there, if, if that makes sense. Because we do have, I feel that we do have recourse if their water bills increase by $104 every month, they don't pay, it gets cut off. The one guy that's got vacant property that the water's cut, that the water line's going across, we get a promissory note and we probably get paid back on that promissory note, potentially to be paid back on that promissory note in the same way we have with the city lending fund that we had for the upgrades, the buildings and all those kinds of stuff on those promissory notes. So I, I'm myself not a fan of the promissory note if we can't put up some kind of collateral and if he's related, that he has the, the financial means to go ahead and pay his 17, 5, we need a contract with no more than 17, 5 with City Plumbing. He needs a contract with City Plumbing 17, 5.
So Mayor and Council, I think what we were wanting from you all, this is why we wanted this discussion, this is a very unique situation. Myself as your city manager, including your staff, we were not comfortable making those negotiations with anyone until we saw if you even had a desire to even offer this. So if you do have a desire to offer this, we can work with our city attorney to come up with a process, as we were describing in this meeting, with the other property owner, but we're very apprehensive because we do not have that authority as city employees to entertain those possibilities of payment plans unless you are comfortable allowing us to do so. We could have brought this to you and you could have said absolutely not, but if it is something you're interested in, that at least gives us as legal means and administration to get something in writing and start a recourse with these property owners. And I'll, city attorney, would you like to add anything to that?
I mean, you, I think you've laid it out as kind of, you know, you're talking about either a secure loan, unsecured loan, or just like, like you mentioned, the, having the owner of the bigger parcel, just a contract with city.
Yeah, he pays his fee. We finance the fee for the individuals that actually live here and they have a, they have a water bill increase of $104 monthly, leave for 12 months. If they don't pay their $104, they get their water cut off. When they pay the remaining, I think it's a pretty cut and dry scenario here. We're financing up to 17, 5 for the individuals that live here. City Plumbing, City Plumbing collects the up to 17, 5 from the vacant parcel owner and therefore, if we do have collateral, our collateral is we cut the water off if you don't pay the water bill. Makes sense?
I hear you.
Somehow, though, I guess that would be my motion to, to make that would be handled in that matter, manner.
So if that's the suggestion of council, I would suggest to council to consider authorizing staff to work with our legal team, our city attorney, to draft a letter to the property owners stating, outlining what these terms and agreements would be and report back to you as an agenda item at your June meeting to make sure you're comfortable with those terms and that all property owners have agreed to those terms.
Would there be a motion then to, to investigate it further? Got a motion in a second.
May I make a statement on behalf of the property owners?
No, sir.
Why not? I want to make a statement on behalf of the property owners.
There, there'll be a moment shortly, there'll be a comment.
Yeah, you do, public comment. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Next item on the agenda, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 10 Municipal Utilities and Services, Section 10 dash 122, C, receptacles and containers required. Section 10 dash 123B, same to meet standards. And Section 10 dash 130A, industrial waste in the city code of ordinance, the establishment of a monthly user fee for dumps, dumpster used in the municipal service district and funding for construction of dumpster pads and enclosures with accompanying budget ordinance amendment. Enclosure three, Josh Beck.
Mayor, kind of several parts here, but again, this is one we discussed at our retreat, if you remember. So kind of hit the highlights. Obviously, for years, we've had individuals, we chat about the need for dumpsters downtown, primarily in the municipal service district. And the reason why that's kind of separate from all the other parcels in Reesville is because those particular parcels are zero setback, simply meaning the edge or face of the brick is the end of their property. Therefore, they have no property outside the actual building itself in order to set their own private dumpster. And so we've had several and, and of course, Montana Brown, who I don't think's here tonight, has also recently had several, which is why we put it on your retreat, to discuss this option with you to provide dumpster service for specifically this district. And I want to be clear, we are not looking to provide dumpster service for Walmart or Lowe's or any other large industry. This, this specific ordinance, as you will see outlined in your packet, is only for the municipal service district and that's the way it's been outlined. And so to, to begin this process, the first thing we did is we looked at several sites, both on each opposite ends, if you will, or east and west of, of South Scales. And so the first site that you will notice that we investigated is actually directly behind Belvedere and there's actually two pads already there. Belvedere is using one. And so what we're proposing in this packet is actually some slight modifications of that one. We want to, you know, in our site visit with our fencing contractor, to make sure we don't impede the drive aisles through that parking lot, he asked us that we shift them slightly back. So some of the costs is associated with that work. And then secondly, we're also looking at, on the opposite side or the east side of, of South Scales in that parking lot at the end, towards the south end, there's a row of probably seven or eight parking spots that are perpendicular, if you will, to, to South Scales. They run parallel with Morehead, in other words. And based on our site visit, that was the best location to get a large garbage truck in to service those dumpsters. Again, such a large piece of equipment cannot make tight turns like you and my car. So we need to be very mindful when we place these facilities that they can easily service them. Obviously, many turning maneuvers to access them prematurely wear out the pavement and that's not something we want to do. So there is an exhibit in your packet to try to explain to you those couple of locations. Obviously dumpster location number one in your packet, that's not going to remove any parking, but to facilitate dumpster location number two, it identify, to put two containers there, it will remove three parking spaces. I just want to be transparent in that. And so there, there are several items in your packet and we want to make sure we hit all of those, but the first thing that we determined is that the cost for two locations or a total of four dumpster pads is $22,000. The quote from the fencing contractor, who happens to be the one that did it at the carriage house, just, I know you guys have visited that facility. And when we priced all those out, he was the cheapest at that time, which is why we went back to him. And so the cost of that, the cost of concrete rebar, again, Public Works would do this in-house. And then I put roughly $1,000 in there to check the property line between the bank and, and our parking lot to make sure when we slide that back, we don't encroach onto their property. So that's the total cost for the project. And then in addition, you'll see, as Mayor mentioned, three sections of our sanitation ordinance, which is outlining those changes. Currently, the municipal code is very clear that we do not provide large dumpster service. Well, that's going to change with this. So it's outlining those changes to make sure that we, we recognize that, that you can now have more than just the roll cars. And then finally, in here is a budget ordinance amendment, that this is something you would like to do to authorize the additional funds to cover that capital cost and that construction cost. So be glad to answer any questions for you on this one.
Any questions with Josh?
What was, y'all did a survey with downtown businesses or?
You're asking the wrong person. I have to, maybe Summer knows? We did, yes. I know.
I just wanted to know the results of, and how the downtown businesses felt about it.
So Montana Brown, the Director of Economic Development and City Marketing, along with our Main Street Director, Robyn Yott, they did go to the businesses. They had sent out a survey and there were several that had inquired. It was a mixed bag. Typically, it was more the ones who needed it, the others seem to be indifferent. But we have had, this was actually kind of initiated by a couple downtown business owners inquiring to, myself and our Public Works Director, right before our retreat of what could they do? But it was kind of a mixed bag and it was primarily those who needed the service were in favor of it. The others were kind of just indifferent because they weren't impacted one way or another.
Okay. One of the things that we discussed in the retreat, if we want to grow downtown, we want to get restaurants in and different things like that, it's going to require this because what, waste management or Piedmont or whoever can't just come and set a dumpster in the back parking lot there. And so we want to encourage restaurants and eateries and those type things. Someone's got to provide this and I thought it was a great idea. And we also discussed there were other locations across that need this in order to potentially promote some type of growth to fulfill some of these vacant buildings uptown, you know? So thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? We have three separate motions here.
Hey, I'd like to make the first one. Make the motion to modify the Reesville City Ordinance, Chapter 10 Municipal Utilities, Utilities and Services, Section 10, 122, Section 10, 123, and Section 10, 130, as outlined in the attached ordinance amendment.
Do we have a second? Motion one.
Second.
Got a second? End of discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion number two. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. A motion to approve the monthly rate of $75 per user for shared dumpster fees in the MSD only.
Is that a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? End of discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And motion number three.
I make the third motion. A motion to approve a budget ordinance amendment of $22,000 to cover the construction costs.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We got a second, end of discussion. All those in favor? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next item, consideration of suggested rules and procedures for City Council, along with changes to Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-10, Appointment of Boards and Commission Members of the City's Code of Ordinance, the Council's Remote Participation Policy and Rules Governing Public Comments at Council's Regular Meetings. Enclosure four, City Managers, Summer Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So what you have is behind the memo, you'll find a draft rules of procedure for the City Council that had previously been discussed at your budget retreat in February and included on last month's agenda with a planned vote at today's meeting. This document provides the Council with a model set of rules by which to conduct its meetings, much of which is based on state statutes. I have previously highlighted some of the procedures that are unique to the City of Reesville. Please pay attention to Rule 19, duty to vote, which is standard of all cities, but staff felt needed, it needed further clarification. So Rule 1 looks at regular meetings, Rule 5, public address to the council, Rule 6, order of business, Rule 8, office of the mayor, for attempt, Rule 9, action by the council, Rule 14, voting by written ballot, Rule 17, procedural motions, Rule 19, duty to vote, and Rule 25, a quorum. To better reflect these rules, we've also suggested amending the rules governing public comments at Reesville City Council, regular monthly meetings. I did like some of the language used in the county's rules for public comments, so we've added these changes as highlighted in red. Council can make any of these changes they would like to the rules of procedure or other documents provided in today's agenda packet. However, if council is good with these as written, the following motions are suggested, all of which will become effective July 1st. So suggested motions would be, A, a motion to approve rules of procedures for the Reesville City Council with an effective date of July 1st, 2025, for implementation. Suggested motion two, a motion to amend Chapter 2 Administration, Article 1, Section 2 through 10, Appointment of Boards and Commission Members whereby appointment by City Council is made by motion, effective July 1st, 2025. Suggested motion number three, a motion to amend the remote participation policy of Reesville City Council to reflect Rule 25, Quorum A, of the Council's rules of rules of procedure, effective July 1st, 2025. And suggested motion number four, a motion to amend the rules governing public comment at the Council's regular scheduled monthly meetings, effective July 1st, 2025.
Any questions on the management?
Oh, I got a question, and this kind of goes back when the gentleman was trying to make a comment. I know we discussed the public comment section, when and where, for Rule 5, public address to the council. At what point in time, for some clarity, especially for myself, when is that public comment section available and when we're dealing with a specific agenda? Like, when that gentleman asked, obviously, let's say he wasn't, he was going to speak on behalf of the property owner, but speaking in general about that discussion, when does that come now?
So typically, how council currently has, it's at the very end of your agenda. This procedural motion would change that to where it would be, your order of business would include, one, call to order, two, invocation, three, pledge of allegiance, four, adoption of agendas presented, five, proclamations of recognition, six, consent agenda, seven, public hearings, eight, public comment, and then it would go into regular business. It would put it at the, more towards the very top versus the last item that you have.
Yeah, so they would speak then, on, say, Rule 5, for instance, what we just had, that's when they would speak, but then they don't get an opportunity to speak during the discussion, like, for any, how some people get an opportunity to speak. I guess what I was trying to figure out was the clarity of that situation with the waterline and him asking to speak, like, moving forward, they still wouldn't get to speak to us as we're up here making these decisions, correct?
Right, it just moves, now, if council had a question or they wanted to engage, they could, that's not just practice. But this does at least move it up to where they have a public comment here at the very beginning, to where they could address you versus having to wait to the very end of your agenda after you've already done all your.
Prior to making the motion and voting.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, we have four different motions. We have a motion for number one.
I'd like to make a motion for number one, to approve rules of procedures for the Reesville City Council with an effective date of July 1st, 2025, for implementation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion number two.
May I like to make the motion to amend Chapter 2 Administration, Article 1, Section 210, Appointment of Boards and Commission Members whereby appointment of City Council is made by motion, effective July 1st, 2025.
All right, we got a motion and a second? All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Number three.
Make a motion to amend the remote participation policy of the City Council, reflect Rule 25, Quorum A, the Council's rules of procedure, effective July 1st, 2025.
Got a second? Motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor? And finally, number four.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the rules governing public comments at Council's regular monthly meetings, effective July 1st, 2025.
Motion, do we have a second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, update of city health insurance and consideration of resolution to authorize participation in North Carolina health insurance pool, enclosure file. Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager of Administration, Finance Director. And I do believe that today is Chris Phillips' birthday.
That is, sir.
All right.
Thanks, Shannon will sing a solo to you.
Well, that was my plan, to sing happy birthday. Would you all help me?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Chris. Happy birthday to you.
And it just so happens, I wish for my birthday, we could get health insurance free. I am very proud to present the health insurance option to you all, and much of our resolutions to the council, and I hope you can give me enough information to be really comfortable approving the resolution. And you're all aware, we were notified in the middle of February of our current provider, which was through the North Carolina League of Municipal Insurance, and then no longer we're going to provide health, just health, dental, and vision insurance to the membered communities. It's about, we think there's about 400 different communities that were with the league through their municipal insurance trust. So it came towards as a shock and a little late in the process, but our human resource directors, Leanne Bayseinger, and our HR analyst, Sharon Hancock, and the city manager, we were all able to jump right in, and they did a great job of getting us some options to see what's out there, who was willing to work with us, who we wanted to work with. We're presenting tonight, and we go with the North Carolina Health Insurance Pool, which is also known as either NCIP or NCHIP, we don't know either, I'm thinking about both of those titles. But what we found with this group was that they are set up a lot like the group that we were with. They only provide insurance to local governments, so they know our employees and our industry. They were able to provide the same benefit that we currently have, so our employees are not going to lose anything, not really going to have to learn new benefits. Believe it or not, this short turnaround, even though we tried to assure our employees did cause some anxiety for our employees and our health retirees, and the way they basically came out to them, it was a little scary that they may not have insurance, but we tried to ensure that the group wanted to handle it, and I think we have. It has become at a 5% increase in premiums, which we also thought was reasonable. Feel like NCHIP, NCIP is in for the long haul, and not trying to buy our business, and then us facing a really large increase next year, and then having to go back out again. We really feel like it's going to be a good fit for us. We found out yesterday, their board has already approved us, contingent upon you all passing the resolution. They are accepting 10 new units of government this year, so out of that 400 and so, they're getting about 10. Again, they're not trying to stretch themselves, they've been around for a while doing this, and have grown at a reasonable pace that they can provide the services. I'd be glad to answer any of the questions that you might have about it, but again, the demo was pretty good. The only thing I want to add is, so NCIP is the actual group that we'll be a part of, but Blue Cross Blue Shield is a part of, the Blue Crosses, they've been in existence, and that's who our folks in insurance are, and they don't say they have the cross of Blue Shield, they don't say they have NCIP, but, so Blue Cross is a part of it. But if you all choose to do so, there is a resolution, and we have forwarded the motion to accept the resolution, and I think, before you all act at all, one of your members is on an eligible retiree and owner insurance, so they probably will refuse themselves for this next rule of business.
That would be me. I would recuse myself from the vote.
Need a vote to allow? Need a vote to allow Shannon to recuse herself?
I make a motion, you have to make a motion to allow, I make a motion to allow Council and Co. to accuse himself.
All right, do we have a second? All those in favor? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the City of Reesville's participation in the North Carolina Health Insurance Pool, effective July 1st, 2025, to provide health, dental, and vision insurance coverage for our full-time employees and eligible retirees.
Second, that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. The important is, insurances, I don't think we have any discussion about that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris, for your hard work.
For celebrating your birthday, we'll toss the time. Okay, next on the agenda, review of proposed 2025-26, 2026 fiscal year budget, with public hearing to be held June 10, 2025. Separate enclosure, as City Manager, Summer Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to present this proposed budget to you tonight. Your budget notebooks are this, and what you see around your table. Also, you'll have, what I'm going to go over is a PowerPoint, it'll be upfront, and then I'll go over kind of slide by slide as well. But do just want to thank you for the opportunity to present, I appreciate staff's hard work on this. This is the first time, I know we've had several budget work sessions, we've been on our budget calendar, but this is the first time I know each of you are actually having an opportunity to review the budget as a whole. You literally were just presented it tonight, so what I would ask is that each of you take some time to review the budget, go over with me as I go through the PowerPoint, I'm going to hit some very high-level overviews, and just keep in mind that we will have a full-on discussion of the budgets, it gives you ample time to review, at your May 19th meeting, which is next Monday, at 5:30 PM at the Carriage House. So with that, here I'm submitted for your consideration, and I'm going to read my budget message just a little bit, so we're in accordance to law, then I'll flip to the PowerPoint. So here I'm submitted for your consideration pursuant to my responsibility as City Manager and Budget Officer is the City of Reesville Fiscal Year 25-26 Annual Budget, scheduled to begin on July 1st, 2025, and end June 30th of 2026. City staff is to be commended for all their efforts and hard work to ensure this proposed budget serves the needs of the public while meeting the governing boards' priorities and policies. The budget has been prepared in accordance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act as required by North Carolina General Statute 150-7. As required, all funds within the budget are balanced along with all anticipated revenue and expenditure estimates being identified for fiscal year 25-26. Notice of this submission will be given to the news media and the public, and a public hearing will be scheduled at the City Council's meeting on June 10, 2025, at 6:00 PM. A copy of this proposed budget will be placed on file with the city clerk and will be available for public inspection during normal business hours within 10 days prior to the June 10 public hearing. As is tradition, a copy will also be placed in the Reesville branch of the Rockingham County Public Library to facilitate its examination by our citizens and stakeholders. And with that, we will now go for a brief overview in your PowerPoint. And I'm going to ask our IT Director, we're having some, gotcha. It's been quite the day. So while Sherrell is working on that, to be mindful of everyone's time, Council, you do have this in front of you to go over, and I'll give this to anyone at the public that would like to see it as well, as Sherrell's working on this. So the objective of this proposed budget is to ensure the needs of all citizens are met in a cost-effective manner. The proposed citywide budget for fiscal year 25-26 is $41,201,600 versus fiscal year 24-25, amount of $39,781,750. This is an increase of $1,419,850, or 3.57% increase, which is related to increased personnel costs, employee health insurance, and departmental operations. General fund revenues. Thank you, Sherrell. General fund revenues. Advailorn current taxes are projected to increase by $460,000. This is due to last year's tax reevaluation in new residential and commercial developments. The city's current property tax rate is 0.660 cents per $100 of valuation. This fiscal year 25-26 proposed budget recommends the general funds tax remain the same. One cent generates us $168,784, so no tax increase is proposed in this budget. Sales tax is projected to increase $75,000. Occupancy tax is projected to increase $20,000, and the Tourism Development Authority distribution will increase $20,000. Utility sales tax is projected to increase $85,000. Other general fund revenues. Inspection fees are projected to increase $85,000. The school resource officer reimbursement increased $30,000, and this is due to increasing salaries. Power bill increased $50,000 due to state's increased allocation. Landfill tipping fees are projected to increase $30,000. Downtown sanitation fees are projected to increase $5,000. Cemetery plots are projected to increase $10,000, and our cell tower lease has increased $3,500. So total general fund revenues are projected to increase $873,500, or 3.93%. I think it's crucial we talk about revenues, what we can anticipate so we can better understand expenditures. So the first part of my budget presentation, we'll be looking at revenues. Our next revenue line item is Parks and Rec Fund. Concessions stands at the splash patter projected to be $13,000. We did not budget anything last year, as this was our first year in operation. Gate receipts at the splash patter projected to be $15,000. We did not budget anything last year due to it being our first year open, and admission last year was free. Concession at Lake Reesville are projected to increase $1,750, and camping fees at Lake Reesville are projected to increase $70,000. This is based off the proposed new fee schedule for camping, and that. This is based off the proposed new fee schedule for camping, and that proposed fee schedule is in your budget for consideration. Gate receipts at Lake Reedsville are projected to increase $1,000. The senior center utility reimbursement is projected to increase $5,000. So total Parks and Rec revenues are projected to increase $105,750 or 5.07%. Investing in our employees. This proposed, this budget proposes a 3% COLA cost of living adjustment for all full-time employees. According to the Consumer Price Index, as of March 2025, prices increased 2.4% over the past year. This budget also proposes a merit increase of up to 3% based on annual employee evaluations. Full-time employees could receive up to a 6% increase with the COLA and merit that is proposed in this budget. The total cost for both is $711,500. This proposed budget also includes one additional loading holiday and one personal day, which is the same as the current budget. This budget also includes one new position, which is a full-time code enforcement officer. This position is in addition to the one part-time code enforcement officer we have. This budget also proposes one part-time evidence card for the police department. Employee benefits. The city participates in the local government employees retirement system elders, which is administered by the NC State Treasurer. The rate for general employees will increase 13.67% to 14.37%, and the rate for law enforcement will increase from 5.04% to 6.110%. The change in rate represents a 90,000 increase for the 25-26 budget. The city health insurance is currently insured through Municipal Trust of North Carolina League of Municipalities. However, as Mr. Phillips alluded to earlier, in February of 2025, the league announced that effective June 30th of 2025, insurance would no longer be offered through the league. City staff work diligently to bid out the city's health and dental package insurance. City staff recommends contracting with NC Hip or NCIP to provide health and dental coverage for our insurance and our employees. This company will provide the same amount of coverage to our employees with a 5% increase, and this will also allow, this budget absorbs that increase without passing on any cost to full-time employees. The rates to selectively cover spouses and/or dependents will increase by 5% for employees. The 5% increase resulted in a $500 budgeted increase in cost per employee and eligible retirees, bringing the annual cost for participants to $13,500. This increase represents $111,000 for this proposed budget. Paying comp. The Pequot Tribe Regional Council contracts with the City of Reedsville to conduct an annual paying comp study for one-third of our workforce. The approximate cost for this study is $6,000 annually. This year, public works went through the paying comp study. This study started in July of 2024 with an anticipated implementation of July 1st of 2025. The total cost to implement the study for public works is $270,140. This will be in addition to the proposed COLA and merit. Capital, so now that we've kind of covered general fund revenues, what you're seeing with personnel, and some of the state mandated retirement system, you will now see, those are some expenditures, now I want to talk to you about capital outlay requests for general fund. All general fund capital outlay has been cut from this proposed budget. There is a surplus in expenditures expected in the 24-25 budget year due to conservative spending in open positions. Items listed on the next slides are recommended for current year surplus expenditures for carryover funding this fall. The total requested amount for general fund expenditures and capital outlay is $1,41,584. And this slide is very hard to see, so I'll be brief of what those requests were. Public Works Administration roof repairs for $7,145. Public Works Administration's flooring repairs for $8,100. Streets Department of BACO for $143,605. Streets Department Skid steer for $89,500. Solid waste, a rear loader for $235,000. Solid waste, a lift gate for $6,259. Engineering, a pavement assessment of $125,000. Parks and Rec facilities, a pickup truck for $49,500. Fire Department UTV for $8,040, or excuse me, $24,000. Fire Department garage doors for $8,475. Public buildings and grounds, City Hall elevator, it came into work this morning, it wasn't working, and I'm so thankful no one got on it. It was $150,000 to look at correcting that, but our elevator is almost 40 years old. The Police Department, three patrol vehicles for $169,100, and then IT computer replacement for $25,900, which brings you to the total of the $1,41,584. All those capital requests are noted, but they have been removed for the budget in order to balance, but I would suggest that Council consider that as we move to carryover this fall. Parks and Rec Fund. The fund remains largely the same as last year with an overall increase of $105,750, related primarily to personnel costs due to the COLA and merit. There are rate increases proposed for this fund in the 25-26 proposed budget. The proposed rate increases are primarily related to Lake Reedsville campground facility rentals. The city has spent a significant amount of funding on improvements at the campground at Lake Reedsville this current fiscal year. More improvements are planned for fiscal year 25-26. These improvements were made possible by the American Rescue Funds. The capital outlay request that was part of Parks and Rec, and again, this has been cut to balance, but gym backboards for $26,000, a vehicle for athletics for $40,000, a leafblower for $10,000, two gators for the lake at $18,000, a golf cart at $8,000, and a vehicle at the lake for $44,000. So the total request in expenditures for capital outlay for Parks and Recs totaled $146,000. Again, these expenditures have been removed for the budget and should be considered in carryover for Council's consideration, but are noted at request of departments. Other funds. Daniel, do you like the garage photo I did just for you? The other remaining funds are either internal or special funds that serve a specific purpose within the organization. Police separation allowance, garage and insurance reserve funds, or Community Reedsville Downtown Corporation. Police separation allowance increased $30,000 from current year. The garage increased $58,700 due to rising operating costs, and our insurance reserve funds increased $24,100 due to rate increases and effects of higher wages. Your Municipal Service District, or MSD, the current tax rate of 0.25 cents per $100 evaluation is recommended for the MSD for fiscal year 25-26. The Reedsville Downtown Corporation acts as the City Main Street Advisory Board. The RDC budget did decrease $9,500 due to the city taking the lead of the Food, Art, and Brew Festival, or the Fab Festival for this fall. And MSD that district is just for those downtown area that pays this additional tax. That additional tax is proposed to remain at the current rate, no increases suggested there. Utility rates. Experiencing what we experienced today certainly leads to an appropriate topic in our budget, and why it's severely important to make sure that we take care of our personnel, our operating costs, and those capital needs to ensure that we can provide safe and quality drinking water. The City of Reedsville contracted with McGill Engineering last year to complete a comprehensive CIP plan. This plan took an in-depth look into the current and future needs of the water and wastewater systems. The CIP also looks at what our city's utility rates need to be in order to operate. The City of Reedsville is growing and employs for even more growth in our future. In order to meet the current and future demands, our utility customers, a 2.5% utility increase across the board is proposed in this fiscal year. This rate is necessary to increase and provide safe drinking water and wastewater services. It also absorbs the additional COLA and operating costs that you see in the proposed budget. It would be recommended that the proposed utility rate increase become effective July 1st, 2025. So with this, this is your Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund revenue based, if Council does desire to adopt that proposed rate fee. Based on that proposed rate fee, the proposed rate increase would generate $155,150, or 2.5% in the water fund, and $162,950 in the sewer fund, for a total increase of $318,100. Water cut-off fees are projected to increase $19,200. This is based on what is currently being collected in this line item. The total combined enterprise fund is projected to increase $337,300 based on projected revenues. So now that you see your proposed revenues in the budget, let's talk about your expenditures. So I did not cut any of the capital outlay requests in this budget. So in water and sewer, it's a little bit different. That's also the need for the 2.5 increase. It has absorbed that capital, which we desperately have to maintain and keep up with. The combined enterprise fund did see an increase in expenditures in the proposed budget of $337,300 or 2.43%. This increase was due to increased operating expenses, debt service, and capital outlay. The water system capital outlay request totaled $1,864,180. The sewer system capital outlay request totaled $2420,000. And the total water and sewer capital request brings the total to $4,284,180. Again, I know this next slide is kind of hard to see for our viewers, so I'll be very brief. This is the capital outlay that is funded in the proposed budget for the water aspect. Meters for new meters and AMR, $124,800. Meter department, a new pickup truck for $46,000. Water treatment tank, water treatment plant potassium tank for $42,300. Water treatment plant, a pickup truck for $55,000. Water treatment plant, a pump, BWP, for $114,300. Water treatment plant replaces sedimentation basin inflight valves for $162,200. Water treatment plant replaced stems and henwills on sedimentation basin for $108,200. The water distribution. Water distribution, main repair and replacement for $1,81,600. This should, in your CIP plan, be considered for either grant funding to apply for or to be financed, because your utility rates cannot sustain that type of debt. So we will need to consider looking at financing options for this particular line item or grants. Your water distribution, your hydrant assembly repair and replacement, $64,900. Your water distribution valve repair and replacement, $64,900. So the total request was $1,864,200, with the understanding everything is included in this budget with the exception of the distribution, main repair, and replacement that should be grant, should look at grant funding or financing. Sewer capital outlay request. Your wastewater treatment plant, replace the gator for $15,000. Wastewater treatment plant inflight impeller for $13,000. Wastewater treatment plant roof replacement for $28,000. Your sewer collection, your four-stripe pump station, this is for $2,178,700. This should be another line item that your utility rate increase not cover, but according to our CIP plan, we should consider looking at financing options or grant funding to fund this particular project. Sewer collection pump station cleanout for $13,500. Sewer collection Thomas lift station for $171,800. Again, all this is included in this proposed budget with the exception of the four-stripe pump station. So total request is $2,420,000. Debt service. The general fund, Parks and Recreation Fund have a total fiscal year 2025-2026 beginning balance of $5,646,356. Debt service payments for fiscal year 25-26 total $564,614, with no new debt being proposed in the upcoming 25-26 budget. We may want to consider during carryover some of those large capital requests for your BACO, and I think maybe the skid steer or rear loader. May want to consider those, maybe financing those, but we can talk more about that at your carryover or your meeting next week. The combined enterprise fund has a total fiscal year 25-26 estimated beginning debt balance of $13,400,270, with potential debt service of $1,600,770 definitely to be paid. Imports of capital projects, again, as we saw today, four capital projects, the BNR, wastewater treatment plant project, the wastewater treatment plant headworks, the redundant water line, and the water treatment plant generator have been awarded grants in low-interest loans totaling $24,595,82. Estimated debt service of $1,331,907 for this future debt has been included in this proposed Budget summary. This budget for fiscal year 25-26, its balance is required to law and continues to provide existing services while meeting governing board's priorities and policies. The fiscal year 25-26 budget proposal involved a lot of teamwork by management team. I cannot say enough about them. They understand some of the uncertainty that we're all facing with increased pricing, day-to-day operations, and they're very steadfast in their budget requests. And I do feel like these budget requests that you see are the bones of what's needed to keep our city operational. Assistant City Manager and Finance Director Chris Phillips is to be commended for his and his department's hard work and financial resilience in assisting with appropriation of this budget. Assistant City Manager Haywood Clout is also to be commended for his assistance in this proposed budget. And I'd also like to thank City Clerk Angela Stadler and Deputy City Clerk Latasha Wade for their hard work and commitment in preparing the budget notebooks. And with that, Mayor and Council, I certainly appreciate the opportunity as your City Manager to have the opportunity and luxury to present you this proposed budget for fiscal year 25-26. I certainly understand it's a lot to digest, so please take this information, review it. In the meantime, you're welcome to ask any questions that you may have as you read through this this upcoming week, but we will be having a budget work session, which is open to the public, next Monday, May the 19th, at 5:30 PM at the Carriage House. So Council, that will be an opportunity for you to ask questions as well, and of course, the public is always invited to attend as well.
What time is it?
5:30 PM. And Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. With that very precise and clear explanation of the budget for 25-26. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bid for J.C. Park concession stand operation, enclosure six. Agent McLeod, Junior Assistant City Manager of Community Services.
We need you to mayor, council, city directors. I'm just for you to ask any question you may have about the proposed bid and when you're packing. Very briefly, as you all know, we entered into a contract with the Reedsville Luckies to run the concession stand a couple years ago. Of course, that relationship has dissolved. And so in an attempt to give the concession stand back open for not only City events, but any tournaments, anything that we may have, we put bids out for it in January. If you are to call, we talked about that, we put out in January, didn't get anyone to respond, and so we just put it out again a few weeks ago. And what you have before you is a bid from Mr. Robert Stanley, who runs the Dog House. And so he's bidding on it, and I'm just for you to answer any questions, and he's here too, if you have any questions for him.
Previously, I thought they served beer there, to serve alcohol when the Luckies were there.
Yeah, that was just a special approval that this board gave them for the purpose of just baseball games when the Luckies were playing, not for you.
I'm just curious.
Not for you. That won't be allowed for you. You don't get special permission for that for the purpose of those collegiate, summer collegiate baseball games.
Did you know regarding that change, that that wasn't possible?
Yeah, that was just for the Luckies.
Anybody that'd like to speak with Mr. Stanley?
I have a question. Mr. Stanley, what your hot dogs at J.C. Park read as saying with downtown?
Yes. I also, I'm working with the Health Department already, being able to serve like I do on my trailer, pork barbecue, chicken barbecue, mini donuts, popcorn, nachos, pretty much full fare that we'll be doing.
Baseball stuff.
Correct.
Correct, that's what we need.
Brock sauce.
I can go there. Can't do this so much.
And we will be working with him, making sure that... And we will be working with him, making sure that he's kept it going on all tournaments or city games and practices, you know, so he can have things available for any citizens who are out there. That's standard. So at this time, if they're just approved by you, we'll just work with him and have him sign the regular agreement, the standard agreement that we've, that we've signed with other people, it's pretty standard. We'll work with him that it's approved by you.
I have a lot of questions, can we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept Downtown Doghouse LLC's J.C. Park concession stand bid, and authorize staff to work with the vendor to sign the city's concessions and maintenance facility agreement.
Motion, yes. All right, we have a second, end of discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, sir. Now it's time for our public comments. Do we have anyone who'd like to come before Council's first? Anyone from Indigo? Would you tell the young man that did leave that he can call and talk to the manager?
My name is Ray Davis, City of Reesville, resident.
Address?
To the mayor, Donald Warren, Mayor Pro Tem, Harold Brown, and the rest of the City Council members, I stand before you in my sincere appreciation, and I know that our RV campers in this and the surrounding areas wholeheartedly back me in saying thank you on the remarkable improvements of our full hidden gem, in quote, the Lake Reesville campground. During last weekend of April, my wife Andrea and I welcomed about 60 RVs as far as away as Detroit, Michigan to Georgia for our second annual Davis RV Life RV meetup. Many who attended last year were thrilled at this site compared to last year. Though there were minor electrical issues at the time, and a few campers had to be moved around, everything worked out fine. I have surveys that were distributed and returned of the campers' concerns and praise, but ran out the house, I left the surveys at home. One major concern from the women, there was inadequate security of the women's bath and shower room. There were locks on the shower inside, but today is time anybody could come in there. That's something we need to address. I want to thank the Assistant City Manager Haywood Cloud, our Director of Record Quentin Robinson, for taking time out of their schedule last year to meet with myself, Bill and Rob, Robin Pitteram, who are seasoned campers, and Jeff Nodlin, as we expressed concerns of hazards and needed upgrades. We thank the council for its budget upgrade, and there was no better person to oversee this project but an RVer himself, our City Public Works Director, Josh Beck, and his crew. I can't sit down without acknowledging the work and the thorough hands-on attitude that of our Lake Reesville camp staff, but specifically Donna and Amanda for all they do and did to accommodate the RV guests. I thank the city office, secretaries, clerks, for the bicentennial magazines and pens that were placed in the welcome packets. Phase one of this project is now complete. I rode out and through the campground on the official opening day this past weekend, just to see the amazement of the RVers that have arrived and set up was priceless. Now, we have to look at another phase for our tent campers and also some water activities, kayaks, and et cetera. An area that is dedicated for them, for everyone don't own nor can afford a RV, but they and their families love tent camping and enjoy the outdoors of nature as well.
Sir, your three minutes.
With the praise that we're getting with... I hesitated, I'm sorry. And I'm finished. Lastly, many questions arise referencing, will there be an increase in rates? And I have responded, yes, in due time, but I propose to the council, always referring back to our neighbor campground, Oak Hollow in High Point, they have four sections, A, B, C, and D, all the four hookups, and a pool in section A. But for several years, that was only $45 per night. I would suggest a $5 more for resident and, what is it called, out-of-town residents, when that time is feasible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just made the comment to support what he said, I was out there two days. Everyone to, from A to Z, enjoyed that state, and plan on coming back next year for a treat from the City of Reesville at Padgy, out here in June. Thank you so much for your organization today. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before Council tonight? Okay, we've already passed out the appointments for board and commission appointments for me, and we'll go next to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try and be very brief with the items during your report, but a couple things, I do want to acknowledge that Annual Employee Family Fun Day will be Saturday, May 17th, at the Splash Pad from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and lunch will be served from 11:30 to 1:30. Also, the Employee of the Year will be announced, and so will the value of the cup blender. And I'll have to extend my apologies, I will be absent as I have a wedding to attend, but it's in good hands with council and also both of our Assistant City Managers. Also, the Reesville Night at the Grasshoppers is going to be Friday, May the 30th at 6:00 PM, so I hope everyone can come out and attend. And then just a couple other projects, the Pet Rainbow Bridge, Aiden Blackwell and his team have actually completed the Rainbow Bridge at Lake Reesville. We are working with the Chamber of Commerce on trying to get a ribbon-cutting schedule. Also, a year by Development Ordinance, city staff is working with the Reesville Chamber of Commerce on hosting a public forum on Tuesday, September the 16th, so please go ahead and mark that date from 8:30 AM to 11:00 AM at the Carriage House. The name of this event will be Jabba and Jargon, Making Sense of the UDO. Also, Social District, Montana Brown and his team have continued to walk with downtown businesses and property, excuse me, talk with downtown businesses and property owners regarding a potential social district downtown. There have been mixed reactions. The team will work on putting their notes regarding each interaction into a spreadsheet, and will share the next City Manager's Report. They're also planning an information session in June for those interested. Additionally, Montana Brown intends to make a couple of social media posts with intent of educating the public on what a social district is. Staff has been working on ordinance as well as we have been reviewing existing ordinances regarding alcohol consumption at city-owned properties. 105 Gilmer Street, city staff has emailed the property owner on April 24th to see when the exterior work would be finished. The property owner needs to complete the step of work on the facade exterior. City staff will continue to follow up with the property owner. A couple other things I just want to address for a moment. One thing prior to today's event that we had identified as a team here at the City of Reesville is the need to improve our phone tree service. You know, so many times with any business or even at your home, I mean, how many times do you call your house to hear your answering machine? We as city staff get accustomed to, we know who to call, but who do the citizens call when they have an after-hours emergency? So city staff, we've been meeting the last month. I know management team has been very good stewards in doing homework and listening to all of their departments' voicemails to make sure that we're directing our citizens in the correct tree line. So Sherrell Williams and her team are working on a modified tree for the City of Reesville, because it is very frustrating when you call here after hours, because you do get knocked around. And so I just want to make note of that, that that is something we are diligently working on. Today's events were no exception. Today's events are the importance of why the budget that you just saw before you proposes, your COLAs, your merit, your capital, all of that to invest in our employees, because these gentlemen right here, I mean, we've got Maurice Brothers, thank you, ORC of our wastewater treatment plant, we've got Edward Shelton, who's the director of our sanitation, and Daniel, I had to pick on you because you were one of the hardest workers in that garage I've ever saw, so that clipboard is for you. And I know Blake Franchi and some of your others, they aren't able to attend, but so many times, these gentlemen and ladies in these departments, they don't get the recognition they deserve. We only realize how important and how desperately we need them on events like today. And today, I was very thankful that I have the team that we have here to call on. It has not been a fun day since 2:00 AM, about all of us in this room know that, but it was because of your hard work, Public Works' hard work, that we're getting through this together. I can't say enough about Chief Gibson, 2:30, 3 o'clock, you were on it, I appreciate that. Chief Farmer, when I called you, you said, "I'm already up, already know something's going on." So I appreciate that. Josh Beck, same for you. Chris Phillips, Angela Stadler. Angela Stadler came in here about 4 o'clock this morning to send out that code red. And there's so many others, Blake Franchi, Montana Brown, that have worked diligently today in addition to the crews on the ground to try and make a situation that was unexpected, completely inconvenient, not only for the residents but the business community, to try and get that resolved. And I just want to give you a heartfelt thank you, because no one wants those phone calls, but when I get those phone calls, I knew I had a good team. And I knew our mayor and council, I know they've been awake as well, because they've been inundated with text messages since early this morning, so thank you for your support and understanding that we were doing the best we could in a very unusual emergency situation. And Mayor, with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you so very much. We'll move on next to council members' reports. Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. I've only got a couple of things. On April 22nd, I attended the budget meeting at the Carriage House. On May the 5th, attended the McLaren Labor Association meeting. On May 7th, attended, our former mayor's going-away event, Che and Ann Donahue, who's moving away, and they had that event at Lucky City Brewery. And on May 8th, I attended the unveiling of the equipment for us at Farm Spa.
Councilman Harrison.
Move what at this time?
Councilwoman Dejanae.
Good afternoon, I just want to say I attended the city council meeting on April 8th. I attended the city council budget and work session at the Carriage House on April 22nd. On April 23rd, I attended the Reesville Chamber meeting. And on April 30th through May 1st, I attended the National League of Municipalities in Greenville, North Carolina, which was very interesting, because we were able to see how other cities have made improvements to their downtown that can help us. Also, I'd like to thank all of you for letting us know the situation this morning, keeping us updated every moment, because it helped us readjust our transportation needs for our clients, and I really appreciate all of you for that.
Councilman Coates. Councilman Moore. I forego, so we can live on a close session. Councilwoman Scotty.
Thank you, Mayor. April 22nd, I attended the council work session at the Carriage House, and on May the 1st, I was fortunate to attend a Mount Jubilee dinner.
Okay. I'm going to forego my report too, but I do want to say a big thank you to our first responders, to our police department, and our chaplains, and others who were on the steps of the PD on May 1st. We had the National Day of Prayer. On that day, everybody's been saying I suffered an episode, and I did. I was dehydrated, and I passed out during the National Day of Prayer. And I do appreciate the fact that we are a team here in Reesville, and the team jumped into action on that day, and they took care of little old me that day, made a special effort to make sure that I was okay. I appreciate that more than they will ever know. It's a good thing some of that we do have what's considered a team here in Reesville, and a team that takes care of the team members, and I appreciate that more than you know. Right, we can go from that to the announcement of board and commission appointments.
Okay, there were two being considered tonight, both were appointed, Todd and May Barry, for the Reesville Store and Preservation Commission, and Susie Johnson for the Main Street Advisory Report.
I do believe the next time we have board and commission appointments, we'll be doing another by vote as we have, as we do. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a move to the first-floor conference room for a closed session to discuss two matters under attorney-client privilege, and to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318.1183 and 6. Do we have a motion to go into closed session? Like a motion, go into closed session. All right, we have a motion, is our second. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. We do appreciate your presence here at home tonight. We will not be coming back out after closed session.